Well, we'll go ahead and get back on to our agenda. Thank you for your patience as we had that opportunity to have those comments from the public. I think I'll jump and finish our advice and informational items and go over to department heads. Dwayne, it's good to have you here tonight. Anything from our police department? Chief?
Your Honor, nothing at this time other than the agenda items I'm here for.
Okay. Marcia? Susan? Jenny?
I wanted to, but I didn't get it once.
Okay.
Great to see you, too.
Okay. Kylie? And Heather?
I just have one thing.
Okay.
I apologize to break the stream here, but tomorrow night we have a public open house from 4:30 to 6:30 for the Three Mile Lane area plan over at Shemecata College.
Thank you, Heather. Mike? Melissa?
Nope.
A couple of things, Mayor, members of the council. You'll notice the city attorney Kosch is not here tonight. His family welcomed his first grandchild. Felix joined the family at about noon today, and the mother was in labor for about 24 hours, so they're still dealing with baby recovery. Baby is healthy and well. He did send a couple of pictures I'll share with you if you're interested in seeing later. I did want to follow up on the request that Councilor Peralta made during reports from the council. There's been some discussion at this diocese a couple of times about the legislative concepts identified in Senate Bill 595. If the council is interested in expressing some specific support for those legislative concepts, we've already done a fair amount of work through the Affordable Housing Task Force on that issue and some staff work based on the task force recommendation. If the council wants to go on record supporting the legislative concepts, I think a motion to that effect is all we would need, but if you want to make that motion and/or have some discussion. Go ahead, pull your...
I'm putting it out there.
Let's just go around. Thumbs up or thumbs down, just?
I am in thumbs up support.
So that was kind of, okay. Adam?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think let's take a motion then that we would have a letter of support on the Senate bill, isn't it? 595?
I would so move that the city council make a letter of rec support in supporting the Affordable Housing Task Force. This is support of Senate Bill 595.
Okay. It's been moved by Zach and seconded by Kelly. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate. Okay, so we'll direct staff then to move forward on that, and we can get that on the record. Scott, I missed you. Any reports this evening from IT?
None.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Our consent agenda this evening is considering the minutes of the joint meeting of the city council and the Buildable Lands Inventory Housing Needs Analysis and Housing Strategy Project Advisory Committee and regular meeting of the city council on January 16, 2019, the minutes of the February 12 city council work session and regular meeting, minutes of the February 26, 2019, city council work session and regular meeting, and minutes of the March 26 work session and regular meetings. And we also are considering a request from DHF Holdings, Inc. for an OLCC license winery second location located at 829 Northeast Fifth Street, number 7, or 700. Are there any councilors that would like to have anything removed off of the consent agenda? If not, I will ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Wendy. All those in favor to approve the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying nay. The consent agenda passes unanimously this evening. This takes us to our ordinances this evening. The first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance number 5066. We will consider this ordinance. Does any councillor object to having this ordinance read by title only? If not, we will have our assistant city attorney read that, the first reading of ordinance number 5066.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5066, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan specific to Chapter 9, Urbanization, and Chapter 10, Citizen Involvement and Plan Amendment, to incorporate great neighborhood principles into the city's land use planning program.
Thank you, Natalie. Chuck, if you'd come up and walk us through a discussion on this ordinance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. So this ordinance, 5066, is a land use application for legislative amendments to our comprehensive plan to incorporate the Great Neighborhood Principles into our land use planning program. So they are a comprehensive plan, text amendments, they're legislative. A legislative hearing was held with Planning Commission, and they were providing a recommendation to you tonight to, and that recommendation was to approve and adopt the comprehensive plan text amendments. So that's what decision you would be making tonight with action on this item. So the Great Neighborhood Principles is a project that was completed by the Planning Department. It was part of the Planning Commission's work plan for the past couple of years. And really, the idea behind the project was to answer the questions of what makes a great neighborhood in McMinnville, what elements should be included in a neighborhood, either existing or new, to make it great. Kind of this graphic summarizes that by looking at all those things that go into a neighborhood and to the built environment that contribute to a neighborhood and provide the amenities that people want to see. And specifically, we were looking for what people in McMinnville thought was important to our community here. So the purpose was to develop these Great Neighborhood Principles as we're referring to them, that identify those specific elements, and it was always intended that those would be adopted into our comprehensive plan and be used to draft future code amendments and to guide future development in our community as we see growth occurring. And overall, just doing that in a way that ensures that all places and neighborhoods are livable, healthy, safe, for all residents of our city. So this is the project timeline. I'll just summarize it that we started in September. We formed a project advisory committee who met about monthly throughout the process and oversaw the development of the project. We had a public open house. We had some outreach that we did, online presence as well. Specifically, we had an online survey and also had hard copies around the city where we got a lot of input from the community. We had our public open house. We went around to the service clubs and just got the word out about the project and got some community buy-in for it that way, did some other newspaper and school flyer announcements, and I think all that helped us to get a lot of input on our online survey. That was the place that we got the most input and guidance in developing the recommended language that you'll be looking at tonight. So our project advisory committee, they met throughout the process. At the culmination of it, they had recommended and advised staff to start drafting some of the comp plan text amendments that they reviewed eventually in January, and they reviewed those text amendments and suggested that they be brought forward through the formal review process with Planning Commission and City Council. These were actually shared with you at that joint meeting of the BLI HNA Housing Strategy Project Advisory Committee, the day after that project advisory committee for this project took that action. So I'll share that with you and point out some of the small things that have changed since that time. But we did bring it through Planning Commission. Planning Commission held a work session on it in February, supported the concepts, and with some minor amendments, moved it forward for a public hearing, which was held last month in March. And they did, like I said, made a motion to recommend approval to the city council. So the actual comp plan text amendments themselves are proposed to be added to the urbanization chapter of the comp plan. That chapter kind of has the high-level process in terms of the land use program and how the city will urbanize. So we're proposing to add a new section titled Great Neighborhood Principles, and each of those principles would be added as a policy within that section. That's the way the comp plan is formatted, with goals, policies, and proposals. So the proposals that we included and as they're intended are meant to be actions, future actions, that the city can take to further implement the policies and the Great Neighborhood Principles. So I'll walk through each one of them and summarize them. I won't read through them all in detail, but they are in your packet. And if you have any questions at the end, I'd be happy to answer those. The first one is a policy, and it kind of establishes the framework for what this is intended to do. So the principles are intended to guide the land use patterns, design, and development of the places that McMinnville citizens live, work, and play, ensure that all those places are livable, social inclusive, safe, and vibrant. The second one is that the Great Neighborhood Principles will not function independently, and that wasn't the intent of them. They were intended to all be applied together as an applied approach to neighborhood design to make sure that all of these things are being achieved in every neighborhood and every place in the city so that a great neighborhood is accessible to everyone. We did add some language throughout the Planning Commission process, which I'll touch on a little bit later, that our neighborhood design will also help support today's technology and infrastructure and can accommodate future technology and infrastructure. This policy just kind of reiterates that the principles will be applied in all areas of the city, kind of trying to get at that equity issue and that we're providing a great place to live regardless of the location in the city. Then we have language in this policy that states that the principles will guide long-range planning efforts and also applicable current land use and development applications. And this can, like I said, will develop more detail potentially in code amendments in terms of what exactly the current land use projects that would apply. But this language intends that it'll guide future growth as it occurs in the city. And then we get into Policy 187.5, which lists each principle, and then it states that each principle is followed by language that provides some direction on how the principle can be achieved. So I'll go through each of them. There are 13 of them. I won't read them all in detail. I'll just kind of touch on the main points, and then I'll just say some of these pictures in here as some of the things that we included in our outreach that received positive feedback, so just kind of visually showing what kind of the intent of the principle is. So the first one is natural feature preservation. Neighborhoods are designed to preserve significant natural features. The second principle is scenic views. Great Neighborhoods preserve scenic views in areas that everyone can access. The third is parks and open space, and this was probably one that got the most support in our outreach. So great neighborhoods have open and recreational spaces to walk, play, gather, and commune as a neighborhood. We have some language in there with some more detail on kind of how that could be achieved, like providing open space at a scale relative to the development that's occurring, providing central locations, and that parks are developed in accordance with the Parks Master Plan. The next principle is pedestrian-friendly. So the Great Neighborhoods are pedestrian-friendly for people of all ages and abilities. Similarly, bike-friendly, bike-friendly for people of all ages and abilities, and both the pedestrian and bike-friendly kind of call for a network that's safe and enjoyable, not just for transportation, but for other reasons like health and recreation and social interaction. And we identify some specific things that we'd like to see connections prioritized to, like schools and other community facilities and parks. The next principle is related to connected streets, and so this is intended to provide for a connected street network as neighborhoods are developed, to increase travel route options and connectivity between the built places and easy pedestrian and bicycle use. Again, just more language on that. We did include, based on some Planning Commission conversation, some language in here that streets are designed to encourage more pedestrian, bicycle, and transit mobility with a goal of less reliance on vehicles for transportation. The seventh principle is accessibility. So Great Neighborhoods are designed to be accessible for all people of all ages and abilities, and this was intended to kind of go above and beyond what minimum practices are and encourage further design practices that support accessible places. The eighth is human-scale design. This one's related to how our built environment is designed to be comfortable at a human scale and foster human interaction with the built environment. And these are just some of the examples of that, so spaces that are accommodating for pedestrians, buildings that are oriented towards the streets, and those types of things. The ninth is mix of activities. Great Neighborhoods provide easy and convenient access to many of the destinations, activities, and local services that residents use on a daily basis. And the focus on this one was kind of the neighborhood serving commercial and other types of uses at a scale that's compatible with the surrounding residential area and in a way that is accessible to people so that they can access the goods and services they need within their neighborhood. And again, coming off of the Planning Commission conversation, again, an intent of this was that those activities and those services are available so that people can have less reliance on a vehicle. The tenth principle is urban-rural interface. Great Neighborhoods complement rural areas and provide a transition between urban and rural uses. And the next two focus on housing. So there's an intent here to provide for a diverse diversity of housing types in neighborhoods. So the first one is housing for diverse incomes and generations, providing those opportunities for people and families with a wide range of incomes and for people and families in all stages of life, so kind of the multi-generational housing and ability to age in place. And housing variety, that Great Neighborhoods have a variety of building forms and architectural variety to avoid monoculture design. We didn't want to include language on, you know, limiting housing form in any way, but just that there is some variety and differentiation in the built environment. And the last principle is unique and integrated design elements, and these are things that didn't score as highly in some of the outreach that we did, so they were included as kind of an encouragement, but that neighborhoods include environmentally friendly construction techniques, opportunities for public art, and neighborhood elements and features that are consistent throughout the neighborhood. And these are just some photo examples of some of the things that were identified as desirable through the process. And so then I mentioned that proposals would follow the principles, and those proposals are future activities that the city could take to further implement the principles. There's 10 of these that are proposed. The first is to do a citywide inventory of Goal 5 resources. So these are things like our natural resources that we'd like to protect, having an inventory of where those are so we can plan for them as growth occurs. Similarly, doing an inventory of landmark trees that are of significance or value to the city's environment or history. The next one deals with park and open space requirements and how those would be drafted to be proportional based on the size of development that's occurring. And we would, this proposal kind of provides some guidance for how that would occur and defining exactly what that would be in terms of basing it on a number of dwelling units or size of the development and coming up with some thresholds for the type of open space that might be required for each type of development. The next two proposals relate to completing an updated bicycle plan and pedestrian plan to guide the growth of those networks throughout the city, and that those could be completed as an appendix to the transportation system plan or as part of an update to the overall transportation system plan. 45 and 46 relate to developing site and design requirements for how commercial and industrial development would occur, and then also for developing codes that allow for a variety of housing types and forms and site and design requirements for those housing types and forms.
And on 45, Chuck, the development of a site requirement, we do not have that at this particular time. Is that correct?
That's correct. Outside of, we have some design and development standards for like certain areas of town, like the downtown and some of our planned development overlay areas, but this would be for all commercial and industrial uses. Similar with housing as well, so developing some site and design requirements for different housing types so that they're compatible with the existing built environment. Number 47 is one that was added during the Planning Commission process so that the city will evaluate the impact of future technology on neighborhood design and develop codes that support today's technology and infrastructure but can accommodate future technology and infrastructure as well. And that was also in response to some comments from McMinnville Water and Light, which I'll touch on in a moment. And then finally, that the city will develop a design and development standards that allow for coordinated incorporation of existing and future infrastructure into neighborhoods. So those are all the amendments that are included in the decision document before you tonight. Just wanted to touch on the testimony that was received as well. Like I said, we got a lot of outreach during the process that we went through with the project advisory committee. Once we got to the public testimony period, we completed the standard public hearing notices. We didn't receive any public testimony throughout the public hearing process. We did get one list of suggested amendments to the Great Neighborhood Principles from McMinnville Water and Light, and that was included in your packet. It was shared with the Planning Commission, and they discussed it during the public hearing. They found that the scale and the scope of some of the proposed amendments were too detailed for the policy-level language that the Great Neighborhood Principles were intended to be. So they did address the comments, and they drafted those proposals that were on the past screen to provide for some guidance in how we could still work towards a coordinated approach to infrastructure design and incorporating that into our neighborhoods, and that we can continue to work on that. And so that was the Planning Commission's response to the comments and what was included.
So again, would that possibly be, as we're looking at more high-density, the ability for Water and Light to get their lines of water and electricity into the locations and having some variances there possibly, or?
I think that's all to be discussed as we continue to talk about development standards and how those relate to infrastructure, and those are conversations that we'll have with McMinnville Water and Light. But they're included in our development review process now, obviously, and we'll continue to do that, and just make sure we have a coordinated approach to infrastructure development as growth occurs in our community.
I know on landscape that there's a good working relationship that before we move forward on any of those landscaping designs, that Water and Light has to give their stamp of approval that it's appropriate to get their services to the homes and the buildings.
Yep. Yeah, it's a good example. They're heavily involved in the landscape plan review and street tree placement and ensuring that those things are happening in places that don't conflict with infrastructure. So based on that and the process that we went through, staff's recommending and coming out of the Planning Commission and the project advisory committee that the comprehensive plan text amendments be approved as they're presented in ordinance 5066, and that includes some of those additional amendments that I mentioned and touched on in the staff report in response to the McMinnville Water and Light comments. Those are all included in the ordinance. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have for me at this point.
So let's open it up for council discussion. Any questions or discussion we need to? Wendy?
Thanks. I think the principles that you guys came up with, everybody who worked on this, are awesome and a great addition to our ordinances. I had a question about how, what the next steps are for this, how it specifically will be integrated into our process of looking at new subdivisions and things like that. It'll be a part of the application questions, just kind of the boots-on-the-ground.
Yeah.
How we get from the high level, like we want to see this in communities, to actually having it implemented.
Yep, that's a great question. So if these are adopted in the comprehensive plan, they become policies, and the comprehensive plan states that policies are applicable when the city, the Planning Commission, the city council is making a land use decision on any particular application. So they will need to be addressed in a development or an applicant's land use application. So they'll have to provide findings for how they're meeting these policies. Now, they are kind of high-level at this point, so they would be providing their argument for how they believe they're meeting it in their development proposal. And until we, you know, follow some of the proposals and potentially draft more code amendments that get more specific, that's how they would be applied to land use applications at this point. And then the city has the opportunity, as we go through potential code amendments and clarifications and getting into more detail, like the park and open space requirements, determining what those levels might be that are appropriate. Until we get to that, the policies will be our, the language we would use to take action on any requests that's before you.
So it opens up the dialogue at this point that they have to address it, because it's not very specific yet. It would be like, it would be, there would be some discretion.
Correct, yeah. That was the intent of them being the higher-level policy level in the language as it's proposed, but yeah, they would need to be addressed in an application.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, go ahead, Zach.
Go ahead, Zach, and then, okay. Kylie?
Okay. I guess the only thing I wanted to add is, as I'm thinking about this with the focus, with the urban growth boundary issues and things like that, and such a focus on density, in a sense, this provides kind of a roadmap to make the community livable, even if you do add density. This forces a certain level of livability that we have to have, and it's an important part of the urban growth boundary discussion.
And that was an intent of doing this process now, as we're going through our Buildable Lands Inventory and Housing Needs Analysis and Housing Strategy, was understanding what our community wants to see in our neighborhoods as we grow, making sure we include all these things as we start to plan. And our next step of doing our urbanization report and figuring out what we need for parks and open space and schools to support residential growth, we wanted this process to be done and have some community buy-in for what, how that growth might occur. So that was the intent of doing it at this point, and our steps in the long-range planning that we're working through right now.
Any other discussions? Sal?
Do we have any current requirements for adding trees as people build residential inventory? And can you explain what those are to me, because I'm not familiar with them?
Yeah, we actually have a whole chapter in our Arizona Code on Trees, but yeah, we require street trees, so that's the main thing that we require specifically for new residential development. Any multiple family or subdivision is required to plant street trees in the planter strip between the sidewalk and the street. And then outside of that, for other development, we have landscaping requirements where landscaping needs to be provided on development sites, so that can be trees, it can be shrubs, a combination of those things. But yeah, we do have standards in place for incorporation of trees into our neighborhoods. And trees was something that came up also in our survey that was very highly supported. So we made sure to include that in some of the language you saw here.
Yeah, I'm wondering, would this be an appropriate place, or would there be an appropriate place for us to kind of review that part of the city ordinance? I have been following the climate change conversation, and one of the strategies is communities should plant more trees, and we've been a Tree City USA city for 40-something years, I think the mayor said tonight. And I'm wondering if that's something that we should consider from a policy standpoint to encourage, and whether that can be part of this process.
I think you need to go with Zach to the Landscape Review Committee. It's a well-attended committee, Scott, and I frequently go. You'd really understand the tree situation.
Was that where I need to go to get the tree skinny?
It's well addressed, trust me.
We spend so much time and effort on street trees, and you can't take down a tree without replacing it. It is a very intense process with even the right types of species of tree that is replaced. We have a lot of good discussions.
Well, it's just we're doing something on plastic bags to do our part, and it occurs to me that if we plant a billion trees, we're going to do something to address climate change, and maybe that's something we should be thinking about as a city going forward, that that should be. But I'll talk to Zach offline.
So Councilor Peralta, if I can just respond to that. First of all, if you are coming to Landscape Review Committee and Counselor Manke, Mayor Hill, and Counselor Gary are all coming, let us know so we can notice it as a quorum of city council. But anyways, with that said, the Landscape Review Committee has a work plan. Part of their work plan... Part of their work plan is looking at those sort of proactive discussions over this next year. We've been fairly reactive in the way we approach landscaping. Traditional, you heard about it, street trees, you've got so much of a percentage of your property. And it's been a lot from a sort of an aesthetic viewpoint, and with Jamie Fleckenstein being a landscape architect and the knowledge that he brings to bear, he's working with them to get them into sort of the next level of discussion as to how to leverage landscaping for future planning in the community. So that's a great dialogue to bring to them.
Want to mention the street tree list, too?
That will be, Jamie will be bringing you some stuff at your meeting on April 23rd as well, so we can have more discussion about it then.
I think the sum total of my contribution has already been made for...
Yeah. Any other comments? Okay, we've had our first reading. Ask for a motion of to pass ordinance number 5066 to a second reading.
So moved.
It's been moved by Zach and seconded by Sal. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Okay, we will ask our assistant city attorney, Natalie, if you would have a second reading of ordinance number 5066 by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5066, and ordinance amending the comprehensive plan specific to Chapter Nine, Urbanization, and Chapter Ten, Citizen Involvement and Plan Amendment, to incorporate Great Neighborhood Principles into the city's land use planning program.
Thanks, Natalie. I will ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5066.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
So it's been moved by Kelly and seconded by, was it Adam?
Sal.
Oh, Sal. And so I will call on the city recorder to poll the council.
Councillor Dropkin?
Aye.
Councillor Garvin?
Aye.
Councillor Gary?
Aye.
Councillor Peralta?
Aye.
Councillor Stassenz?
Aye.
Councillor President Minkie?
Aye.
So ordinance number 5066 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. Thank you. That takes us to our second ordinance this evening, the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance 5067. Is there anyone that objects to having this ordinance read by title only? Hearing none. I'll ask Natalie to read the first reading of ordinance 5067 by title only.
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5067, and ordinance amending Chapter 3.18 of the McMinnville City Code to add sections providing supplemental standards for small wireless facilities within the public right-of-way and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Natalie. Tom, if you would present to the council?
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and councillors. The item before you is, would amend the city code as relates to your strategic priority and goal of growth and development character, to guide growth and development strategically, responsibly, and responsibly to enhance our unique character. So this would amend, there are currently provisions in the Chapter 3.18 of the municipal code pertaining to telecommunications infrastructure. This would add a section providing additional standards for small wireless facilities within the public right-of-way and declaring an emergency, making the ordinance effective upon passage. So a little background, the city currently regulates wireless facilities as part of the zoning ordinance. This action is necessitated by an action taken by the FCC last fall, dealing with requirements for cities pertaining to a subset of telecommunications facilities within the public right-of-way, which the term used in the FCC ruling is small wireless facilities, SWFs for short in here. And so those differ in some ways from kind of the historic cell towers you might have seen. These are the smaller types of things that are typically either mounted on existing utility poles or on independent poles. By definition, those things that the city must address for small wireless facilities are defined in the FCC definitions and included in your ordinance. So they're these smaller antennas that are three cubic feet or less, and other equipment enclosures are twenty-eight cubic feet or less. And there's some other provisions in the definitions as well relating to whether the structures require registration and consistency with certain radio frequency limitations. So here are just a couple visuals to give you a sense of kind of the scale of the old either cell tower, kind of what is now sometimes referred to as macro installations versus micro installations. So these aren't the big cell towers with big antenna arrays, either the large monopoles or the lattice towers. These are, again, things that are more on what you typically see on more of a small utility pole or streetlight type of installation. This just gives you a sense of the size of those things that were defined earlier, three cubic feet for antennas and twenty-eight cubic feet for the equipment boxes. There are some illustrations that give you a sense of that. The one on the left just shows you what that might look like with what's sometimes called a canister antenna, or for short, a cantina, with an equipment enclosure on the ground. The middle one shows what that might look like if those were installed on a pole. And then a lot of the standards deal with, that are proposed, deal with these designs that are available now from equipment manufacturers. So there are streetlight poles or freestanding poles that are specifically designed to incorporate installations for antennas, that all of the wiring and cabling can be hidden behind the enclosures and incorporated internal to the poles. The example on the right shows the equipment cabinets actually integrated into the base of the pole, so you don't have the freestanding equipment cabinet. So those are kind of the size and scale of what we're talking about. Just some other examples of what those installations often look like.
That woman's really tall.
As tall as those buildings behind her. The FCC declaratory ruling really dealt with kind of three major topics. One is standards, one is procedures and timelines, and the other one is fees. So in terms of standards, they said by April 15th, cities may only enforce aesthetic undergrounding and spacing standards that are, meet those three bullet points. Have to be reasonable, no more burdensome than those applied to other types of infrastructure deployments, and objective and published in advance. So that's, again, why we're here this evening. In terms of the procedures and timelines, there are some requirements that cities have to accept batch applications. So typically on these smaller network deployments, instead of installing one antenna at a location, they're usually installing, it's the term that's used for this, is there's more deployment of the current 4G technology and the forthcoming, somewhere down the road, don't know when yet. 5G technology is this densification where there's a smaller infill with these smaller types of facilities. So typically, applications come in with multiple installations at a time in batches, and FCC provisions provide that all authorizations that are needed for a deployment. Would need to be, need to include all those local approvals as part of a application process that's subject to these time processing provisions that are the presumptively reasonable time period. So sixty days if an antenna is to be co-located on existing pole, or ninety days if there's a new pole installation. And cities can conduct a completeness review within ten days. If an application's not complete, then that stops and restarts that processing timeline. The next item on your agenda actually is a resolution addressing fees. So the FCC ruling provides for these presumptive fees, providing, it can establish a $500 fee for up to five applications that are submitted as part of a batch, or an additional hundred for each one above that. And you can charge an annual recurring fee of $270 for facility. And then cities, and actually, in the case of a pole owner, which may not be the city, so we have pole owners that include McMinnville Water and Light, but the city and the pole owners have authority to recuperate costs associated with what's called make-ready expenses to prepare the right-of-way or the pole for installation of these facilities. There's authorization to charge higher fees based on those three bullet points that are noted on the overhead. At this point, we don't have a lot of history what the actual costs might be, but that might be something to revisit a future date. So I won't go through all of the standards that are proposed in the ordinance for these, but essentially, the first part of the ordinance outlines a series of principles, and so those individual standards follow through with these, the intent to achieve these principles. So first of all, where we have these installations, it may include replacement of poles or equipment enclosures, some of those things. First principle is to avoid installations in those areas that are most visually aesthetically sensitive, pedestrian-oriented areas, where you have something like Third Street, where those facilities are right in the space that are designed for occupancy by people, as opposed to something like installation on a streetlight pole or utility that might be elsewhere in the community. And some of those, particularly if McMinnville Water and Light also adopted at their last board meeting, their standards as a pole owner for attachment to those. In some cases, they may not allow for equipment enclosures to be mounted on the pole or undergrounded. So that would mean in some cases, if there are poles where they can't be, these equipment enclosures can't be incorporated into the base of a pole, then some of those equipment enclosures, equipment enclosures, excuse me, might be competing for sidewalk space in those pedestrian areas. So trying to avoid that situation where we have a lot of these boxes with these denser deployments taking up a lot of pedestrian space. Second item, kind of the major principle, is to require co-location on existing poles or replacement poles that are designed to incorporate all of that wiring and have those equipment boxes integrated into the pole design, and to match those closely to existing designs for streetlights and things like that that we have now. I'll have some graphics to share with you here in a moment, too, but third principle is to avoid installations on pole types. It would have and essentially endearably alter the desired aesthetic effect. So start trying to put antennas on top of things like the single acorn-type lights or lantern-type lights. Can look kind of strange. For some of the wooden utility poles we have, it's not going to always be feasible to replace a pole that would incorporate that equipment internally. So in those areas where installations may occur on the wooden poles, then we want to make sure at least the equipment's enclosed behind enclosures and that the cableings are out of the ground and conduit, so that reduces some of the clutter. And generally, those external above-ground equipment enclosures are really our last resort, except for some of those installations on wood utility poles that can't be replaced to incorporate those internally. So we'd want to avoid those in the pedestrian-oriented areas, and if they're a lot elsewhere, we want those to be behind the sidewalk and not in the middle of the pedestrian areas or landscape areas. Last principle is to, as kind of relating to the technology, looking at future technologies over time that I just heard in the Great Neighborhood Principles, is to look at whether, going forward, as technologies evolve, whether there might be some instances where either citywide or for special districts, it might make sense to look at some other standards or specifications that incorporate some of the smart pole or smart city technologies. So this graphic shows an example of where some of those antennas are incorporated into the pole below the streetlight luminaire itself, where there's a range of different kind of aesthetic treatments for those streetlights. There's typically space for deployment of other smart city types of technology within the poles in addition to the antennas. And then again, the equipment can be incorporated into the base, so you really reduce a lot of the clutter and can accommodate a lot of the technology in a more consistent, pleasing design. So here's some of the examples, reading through the standards of installations that are, would be not permitted. So the first one's what would be considered a strand-mounted antenna hung off of utility lines. The second one is the example I mentioned earlier, where you have kind of the antenna stuck on top. This one's actually designed by a manufacturer, but it really is a different look than when you put an antenna on top of something like an acorn luminaire, then you don't have that around. It looks pretty unusual, if that's, depending on what look you're going for in your kind of decorative areas, that may not be a good fit. Here are some of the examples of just the different boxes and all the wiring and cabling deployed on utility poles. Some of these are probably larger than what would be allowed under the small wireless facility deployments, but a lot of equipment, a lot of cabling, all visible. Some of these, and these are all more probably community-wide installations. It doesn't look like those are examples on kind of downtown poles, but you could get the same type of thing on some of your decorative light poles. Could be pretty disruptive to your aesthetics. And again, a few examples of what it looks like, even with some of the things done well, you have some of the enclosures or the antennas, but a lot of the cabling's exposed. The bottom right there, you have an example where the equipment's incorporated into the base of the pole, but it's pretty large and doesn't really match the sex of what's around it. And the antenna on top, while it's a canister-type of antenna, it doesn't transition, so it's a little less discreet how it ties onto the pole itself. Here's an example, it's a little bit hard to see the color here, but this is actually a photo in one community where it's not a bad installation, but these are actually contrasting where the closer pole installation has more of the design that matches the style of the pole. The collar where the antenna attaches is more of a decorative kind of treatment that's consistent with the theme of the streetlight. The one in the back, it's a little bit hard to tell from this, but the antenna is actually a different color than the streetlight, has some of the external cabling visible. So our standards are designed to approximate what you see in the foreground rather than the background. Here's another example of, this is a freestanding pole and a couple of these, but an installation where there's an attached streetlight. But again, the antenna is pretty unobtrusive, and the equipment's all internal and incorporated into the base of the pole. So those, just want to give you some visuals to go with the standards that are in your packet. Again, we're recommending approval of the ordinance as proposed, so the standards are adopted and effect prior to April 15th, and we'd have the standards that would achieve the requirements in the FCC ruling. I don't believe there's anything that would preclude the city from going back and revisiting and amending these standards, so long as we have these in place prior to the 15th, too.
Thank you, Tom. And before our discussion, I just would thank the planning department on a quick turnaround on this. I think many cities are not prepared for what we've done in such a short time. John Dietz and myself had an opportunity to go back to the American Public Power Association, and this is one of the classes we took, and we've taken a number of these. But what's happened in the last year with the FCC regulating and taking more control in this area, we came back and we had this April 15th deadline, and as you can tell, it's pretty technical stuff and a lot that needed to be accomplished. And so I know we had to kind of clean off the desk a little bit and really formulate this. Water and Light, we had an opportunity to take it to the commission at our last meeting, and it's great that we've made our April 15th deadline, because now it gives us the ability to have some control over this area, because if you'd passed April 15th, FCC would have a lot more control. And so thank you for the focus and the fine work that, from my perspective and the training I've had, seems to address. So with that being said, I open it up for any discussion among the council.
Just one thing. I know we looked at, we did something similar with wireless and poles and stuff like that, antennas and things like that. Does this just kind of fit in, insert in there for the changes, or are you going to have to go through line by line and change a lot of that?
No, so this is proposed to be incorporated as a new section in Chapter 3.18 of the municipal code. code. There, with some of the FCC timeline, the processing timelines identify there that some of that may be different than what we have in the land use provisions in the zoning ordinance. So those continue to apply unless there's a conflict that deals with the small facilities within the right-of-way, in which case these would override those other provisions. We need to follow the procedures in here and the right-of-way installations.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My recollection was that the main difference was that in our city code that we adopted last year for these small facilities, that the height restriction was less than what's in this. Is that, is that right? We had 40 feet and this is 50?
So the definition of small wireless facilities in the FCC ruling is that 50-foot limit. Essentially, the way our standards, for the most part, hopefully will work, is if they're looking at co-locating on existing streetlight pole or a replacement, that that's going to be whatever's compatible with what's in the area.
Hit the upper limit, it's just going to be what's the percentage above the height of the existing structure?
Yeah, and there's three tests that have to be met in there. So one is, can't be more than 10% taller than surrounding adjacent structures. The other one deals with the 50-foot height limit. And this is just in the definition again. So there may be some instances where achieving compliance of these standards may require it to be consistent with a standard that would be lower potentially.
That's my question. So we'd have to, we'd have to move up, if our restriction's 40 and this says 50, do we have to move up to meet their standard, allow that, or reinforce it 40?
So the definition of small wireless facility still uses the FCC's definition. So there, I guess I would note, there's a slight difference between the definition and the regulation. So if someone came in and wanted to do an installation that was 60 feet tall or didn't meet those standards, it wouldn't be considered a small wireless facility anymore, and they wouldn't go through this. They'd have to go through other provisions. So this sets the standards for those that fall within those parameters.
So Counselor Peralta, if I can clarify a little bit, I think what you're referencing is the wireless facilities, chapter that we have in our zoning ordinance. And the 40-foot limitation is for poles that are on private property. We have some language in that chapter relative to the public right-of-way. It's very limited. It was just a catch-all as we were waiting for this to come out of the FCC. And it really talks about the fact that technology on the, in the public right-of-way on poles needed to be reviewed and approved by our two different entities. So our, the city as well as Mack Water and Light, and needed to be in a stealth position. We'll go back and continue to review that to make sure that there isn't any inconsistencies between that chapter and this new language that's in Chapter 3 of the code. But we did, we did a quick review. We had three weeks, I think, to put this together and work with Mack Water and Light and legal counsel to get it to a place where we felt comfortable bringing it to you. But we did do a quick review of our existing language, and we feel that they're compatible.
Thank you. This is a very controversial approach, having the FCC involved in regulating this. You know, on a pole, you know, high, the high-powered wires are at a certain level, and there's a thought that they might want to go above that for these high cell. And they don't have the equipment, the, the communication companies don't have the equipment, and nor would power, water, Mack Water and Light want them to be up in those very dangerous areas. And so there, this is a national debate that's going on right now. There's a pending bill at the, in, I think it's Congress right now, that would back us away from this, but I don't think it's getting much traction. Adam?
Was there any testimony from any of the service providers, or is this just uniform across the nation, so they haven't really got involved with it?
Terms of service providers, we talked with...
Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile.
Not specifically on this ordinance. Some of the McMinnville Water and Light staff attended some of the work sessions and sat down and talked, met and talked about some of the things that were going on in some of the communities to develop kind of...
We have a cooperative approach with our telecommunications in Oregon. So, you know, there's a real concern because we're doing it right in Oregon, but other states throughout the country don't have those cooperative agreements. And so as you can tell on some of the poles, this equipment can be a small refrigerator sitting on the pole. And, and they don't, they're not, they're not making sure that the pole structure's enough to handle that plus the wires plus high winds. And so there's a, like I say, there's a very critical debate that's going on nationally right now. And, but in Oregon, we, we have this cooperative agreement with the telecom companies, and it's worked out very well for us. So we're, we're opposed to a lot of the things that are happening nationally, but that discussion continues. And I don't know if that addresses...
I kind of raised another question. So do the PUDs feel that it could be a safety concern that some of these are going to be mounted up on these poles and they don't have the structure to...
That's part of the discussion. And at this particular time, we've got this cooperative agreement that we're going to be working on our poles. Okay, we've got the equipment and we have the knowledge of what and what you can and can't do.
So Mack Water and Light will be a stopgap that, in our instance, but maybe not for every PUD around the state?
And that's why it was so critical, but both of us had this, these, this ordinance put on the books by April 15th, because after that, you wouldn't have the opportunity to have it binding.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, correct anything...
No, that, that's great. There are a number of groups with the providers and municipalities working on model code language and borrowed some of the work that's been done kind of around those best practices. I think our standards in McMinnville Water and Lights both address structural issues by making sure that poles are designed to carry that equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Seeing none, then I will ask for a motion to pass Ordinance 5067 to a second reading.
Still moved.
Second. It's been moved by Adam and seconded by Sal. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Okay, so we will have Natalie do a second reading of Ordinance Number 5067 by title, by ordinance title only.
This is the second reading of Ordinance Number 5067, and ordinance amending Chapter 3.18 of the McMinnville City Code to add sections providing supplemental standards for small wireless facilities within the public right-of-way and declaring an emergency.
So I will ask for a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 5067.
Still moved. Oh, go ahead.
And a second. So moved by Kelly, seconded by Sal. I'll call on city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Dropkin?
Aye.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
Counselor Stassenz?
Aye.
Counselor President Minkie?
Aye.
Ordinance Number 5067 is adopted by a vote of six to zero. Thank you. This takes us to a number of resolutions this evening that we have before us. Our first consideration is for Resolution 2019-24, Resolution Amending the Fee Schedule to Adopt Fees for Small Wireless Facilities Within the Public Right-of-Way. Tom, you indicated that you'll be presenting this, if you would?
Yes, I don't have much more to add. There's no separate presentation for that. The fee schedule that's proposed for this resolution, those are the fees that I presented in the earlier presentation. So it would establish the initial non-recurring fee for wireless applications consistent with the FCC presumptive fees. It would establish an annual recurring fee, again, consistent with the FCC's presumptive fees. And then it would authorize the specific make-ready cost recovery, should there be actual expenses that are incurred that we could bill for in those individual deployments. At this time, we're not proposing the higher fees, just, we don't have a lot of experience on what the actual costs might be at this time, but that's something that could be revisited at a later date.
Thank you. Any discussions or question? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2019-24.
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, so I've got Wendy with the motion and Adam with a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. This Resolution, 2019-24, passes unanimously six to zero. This takes us to our second resolution this evening, which is 2019-21, a resolution awarding professional services agreement for ambulance and motor vehicle accident billing services. So Chief, if you would address us?
Mr. Mayor and Councilors, we've been evaluating opportunities to try and improve our ambulance billing services for quite some time. Many organizations like ourselves who have used in-house billing services have transitioned to contracts for services with providers of these similar services. As we're evaluating what our primary core services were in, to be consistent with the strategic plan, while fire and EMS is a core service of what we would like to continue to plan, maybe the ambulance billing service wasn't something we should be doing in-house. We should be looking at opportunities to improve it. Within the background information, there's some points pointed out on the opportunities for improvement to our services, to our citizens. And it's not for lack of effort by the employees that are currently working in these positions. It's because the corporations have so much more staffing available to double redundant backup billers and have secondary billers and customer service and QA and compliance officers. Through the process of requesting quotes, we've done our reference checks on the backside and found 10 of them at least within the Oregon that are working with this company currently. Salem was, is one of the more predominant ones who actually used to do ambulance billing services for other organizations in addition to the city of Salem, have transitioned to this company. We also did a site visit with Scott and Marcia and myself up to Paltrow to visit the, visit the facility and ensure the company we would be potentially working with would meet the standards of the city of McMinnville and the citizens and the services that we would want to provide. As you look at the financials, we received three quotes, or three proposals. One was non-responsive. It did not speak to the motor vehicle accident, the, or something else it didn't speak to also, fire med assistance, nor the GEMT billing assistance. So it was specifically ambulance billing only. The other two systems designed was the method proposal requirements and was the low bidder for the price of the process. The, the cost, the, the method that they, they propose is a per-bill fee at $22 per bill. We have $113,000 based on our previous call volume for the year before as an estimate for the extent of the contract. That cost is less than the cost of, the cost of running the ambulance billing service in-house with, as identified in the, in the process. And currently, their collection rates overall for their Oregon and Washington and Alaska clients are at about 91% return, and I believe we're in the high eighties, in the high eighties. So as, as we see currently, our recommendation would be to approve the resolution.
Okay. Any questions of the chief?
Chief, how does this affect your staffing in the department?
So currently, our Jenny, our ambulance billing screener, is doing everything that we need to do to get the bills sent to this company versus to the finance department. So the, the work is already being done from, from the fire department side. Just the software ports the ambulance bills to the company instead of across the street to, so there's no additional workload on, there will be no required, no request for additional staffing, and it doesn't reduce our staffing as far as the city, the fire department. It does reduce ambulance billing, ambulance billing staffing and finance.
So it does reduce finance staff?
That's correct. That's correct. 1.75 to, to employees.
Other questions or discussion?
That's similar to the question that I had. So all of that current cost that you listed in here is costs that will go away when we switch over to this?
That's, that's correct.
So that's the net savings, the difference between those two savings to the department?
That's correct. That's correct.
Is the, is this transition being made a, a position that is, is going vacant, that's not going to be filled, or is it going to result in a layoff?
It will result in layoffs.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your answer.
Layoffs.
Other questions? Discussion? If not, I will, go ahead. Adam?
I guess with the council, or the strategic plan goal, city government capacity, so is there any capacity needed in the finance department to repurpose that 1.75 FTE that we're eliminating by doing this? That might be more of a Marcia or Jeff question?
Go ahead, Marcia.
No, there, there really is not at this time. I did want to say that our HR manager Kylie is really actively working with these two employees. She has got them online. She's working, helping them work on their resumes. She's doing some coaching with them. So I feel that we're providing some really great resources to these two individuals who will need to be looking for employment other than in the finance department.
If I could, I could follow up, the tentative timeframe for this, for their departure would be the end of June, so it's not a two-week notice or something like that. So that, that will afford them some time to look for other opportunities. It also affords the city time to make the transition into the new billing cycle and also catch up on some of our AR that's outdated and, in addition, allow us to prepare for the GEMT billing that will be coming down the pipe relatively shortly. So the existing staff will continue working on those projects up until the end of June.
What's the cost savings on an annual basis? Sorry if it's in the report, I apologize.
That's all right. I just have to, it's $169,000 for actual cost currently, it's $113,000 for the, for the contract, and that's not counting the, the potential revenue increase by the percentage change.
Hearing none, I will then ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2019-21.
Still moved.
And a second. Remy moved and Adam seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay. This resolution passes unanimously five to, this, this resolution passes, passes five to one, five in favor, one opposed. Our next resolution is Resolution 2019-22, a resolution awarding the contract for judiciary clarifiers and ATAD III coding project, Project Number 2019-2. Mike, if you could update us?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to the staff report that's in your packet from city engineer Larry Sherwood, as well as copies of the bid results and the proposed resolution awarding the contract for the coatings of the secondary, I mean, the tertiary clarifiers and ATAD Number Three, Two Extreme Coatings, Inc., in the amount of $355,242. And so, unless there are any questions, staff would recommend you adopt the resolution as presented.
Discussion or questions for Mike?
I have one. Mike, the difference between the long painting and the other two, just out of curiosity, do you have any idea why they were so much higher? $400,000 is a big delta.
I don't, we don't typically call the high bidder and ask why their prices were so...
Is that normal, though, to see...
It does happen, time to time, where you'll see on a project, there'll be, you know, a group of bids that's close together and some that are just extremely high and... And it could be that the contractor already has a pretty full schedule, and they'll throw a number at it if they get the work great, if not, they already have a pretty full schedule, so.
Just curious if, if that was typical, or if...
It does happen, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2019-22. So moved. And a second?
Second.
Approved by Zach and seconded by Wendy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. This Resolution 2019-22 passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to Resolution 2019-23, a Resolution Adopting a Supplemental Budget for Fiscal Year 2018, 2019, and Making Supplemental Appropriations Related to, Related to the General Fund, Parks and Recreation Department, and Donations to KOB Program for Sustainability Assessment. And so we'll call on Marcia to address this on this. Marcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. KOB, Inc., which is a nonprofit board, which supports the KOB program, did donate sufficient funds to pay for the sustainability assessment of KOB. Oregon After School for Kids, Oregon Ask, is the organization that did that assessment, and they presented their report to you on March 12. So the donation by the KOB, Inc. was $40,000, and that did cover the cost of the assessment. We, our local budget law allows us to do a supplemental budget when events that were not known at the time we adopted the budget occur. So this supplemental budget increases the donation revenue by $40,000 and increases the appropriation for professional services in the Park and Recreation Department KOB program budget. So our recommendation would be that the council adopt this resolution, adopting a supplemental budget and making supplemental appropriations.
Thank you, Marcia. And as all of you remember, Oregon Ask came to us and presented that assessment, and we had the reporting given to the council. Any questions for Marcia or discussion? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2019-23. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Sal, seconded by, by Wendy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please signify by saying nay. Resolution 2019-23 passes unanimously six to zero. Our last resolution this evening is 2019-25, a Resolution Awarding the Contract for the Purchase of a 2019 backhoe. Call on Mike to make a presentation to the council. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Again, I'll refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet from street supervisor Dale Marshall, as well as a copy of the draft resolution that's before you this evening. The fiscal year 19 budget includes funds to replace our frontline backhoe, which is currently 20 years old. Move it to a backup role, replacing a 35-year-old backhoe, or 35-year-old backhoe that's serving as our backup. Quotes were received from three vendors. Pape Machinery is the low bidder in the amount of $97,625.41. And so unless there are any questions, staff would recommend you adopt the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mike. Is this unit a gas or diesel unit?
Yes.
I, I asked that just because of the new, the, the dirty diesel bill that's going through. It looks like that we, we may have to replace diesel up to a certain year. I know at Water and Light, it is going to have a, it's a 10-year implementation, but it's really impacting us a bit. And so, gas and diesel, I don't know, would be a question I would ask.
I'll follow up and let you know the particulars.
Okay. I don't know if you've been keeping up on that, but you might reach out to Water and Light because of the impact that they have there on diesel, so. Any other questions?
What's the fate of the old backhoe?
1984 backhoe gets surplused and moved out of our fleet. And then the 20-year-old backhoe becomes the backup.
It's a diesel engine, Mayor.
Going to the farm? Where's it going?
No, the new backhoe has a diesel engine. I just looked up the specs on it.
Oh.
Other questions?
I want to see the mayor drive it when it comes in.
Yeah, let's have an obstacle course and a little training for council.
Know how to drive a backhoe.
I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2019-25.
So moved.
A second. It's been moved by Adam and seconded by Remy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Resolution 2019-25 passes unanimously six to zero. That takes us to the end of our regularly scheduled council meeting. We are going to meet in executive session under ORS 192-6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designed to carry out labor negotiations. So I will go ahead. We need, we don't need to bring anything back.
We won't come back.
Okay, so I'll adjourn the meeting.